Article three is for compensated absences. This is when someone retires and they have sick time or vacation time and we need to pay them for that. The funds come out of this particular fund. That fund has become low. And the other one is for injured on duty. So any of our first responders who have been injured on duty and need to be financially compensated for this, it is paid for out of this fund. So both of these funds have, the amount has come to the point where we need to replenish these two funds to make. The fire department has had on its schedule for quite a while, to be honest with you, they're looking to replace one of their engine trucks. It would replace either a 2001 or a 2003, so an older vehicle at this time. They're still working out which one has the worst wear on it and this would replace that. So the fire chief is looking for $700,000 to replace this fire engine. We have already appropriated this money, excuse me, we've already tucked this money away, excuse me, for this fire engine. So the funding is already there. We're just hoping for your approval tonight. The next is Article 28, the Milford Dam. You've noticed in the past, we've done quite a bit of work down at Milford Pond with the Army Corps of Engineer. One of the last things to complete this project is to work on the actual dam itself, the locks that open and close. Under review from the state, these locks do need work on them. They're in fair condition, which means we need to address the situation now. So this $138,000 is to maintain the opening and closing of these locks so that they operate properly, as well as remove shrubbery and bush that can invade into the area and cause issues with this lock. Article 32, if you'll notice in your pamphlet that you got from the finance committee, there is an unfavorable ruling or opinion, excuse me, on this article. We have since met with the police chief because we didn't have all the information on this and that's why there's an unfavorable rating in there, excuse me, opinion. We have met with the police chief on this. This is a phone system that is out of date. You can't, on some of the things, the calls are inaudible. It poses a real safety risk to the residents of our town. So the police chief is looking to replace the phone system, which has been deteriorating for quite a while. There's no service available for it, no parts. So the amount of $40,000 to replace the phone system and to make sure that it's back up and that we can serve our, the members of our community safely. Last article, Article 33. At our Maytown meeting, there was a removal of $172,000 from the police budget. We are looking to replenish that $173,000 into their police budget so they can function properly. If this money is not added to the police budget, they have no ability to function without laying off people, personnel. Dispatches will be let go. If dispatchers are let go, police officers are going to be taken off the street and put into the dispatch room to do the dispatching. So Article 33 is looking to replenish that fund. So we have some recommendations at this town meeting, as we usually do. We're looking to add $2.8 million of free cash to provide some taxpayer relief. You're going to see that in Article 42. We have been trying, year after year, to keep the tax rate at a reasonable level for our residents while still providing the good services. Because of our good financial position and our good financial planning, we have the ability to continue to do that again this year. So we're looking to apply $2.8 million of our free cash, kind of like our savings account, toward the tax rate so that it can take some of the burden off our taxpayers. We are looking to put $2.9 million into our stabilization fund. That's Article 41. We are always saving. We have a mantra on the finance committee, there's never enough saving. Some people say, there's a school coming, that's a famous line of some of our members. And in fact, there are schools that are going to need work and other projects in town that are going to need funding. Maintaining and continuing to give to our stabilization fund allows us to borrow at cheaper rates and puts us in the position that if we ever do have an emergency or a large project, we're able to fund that properly. And also, we would like to take $1.96 million of free cash into the spring. This is a fantastic number and we're very proud of this and proud of the hard work of the financial team, selectmen in the finance committee and department heads to be able to achieve something like this. I know the numbers are small and there's not a point of even seeing the numbers. All I'm trying to illustrate on this is that on all the articles here, we are spending everything from raise and appropriate. There's only one thing here that we're doing from free cash and that is applying that to the tax rate. That's the only thing we're doing with free cash at this town meeting. Everything else from this town meeting would be under raise and appropriate. This is our balance sheet once again. There's nothing there that I am hoping you do see. All I want to illustrate down at the bottom is that there is a zero. The left-hand side indicates all our revenue sources, the right-hand side indicates all our spending. The end of the year, after everything that we're hoping to do, it's going to zero out at the bottom, which is exactly what we want it to be. So the financial impact of the articles that we have today at this town meeting, we're entering this meeting with $6.9 million in excess levy capacity. That's our ability to tax our taxpayers. We're entering this meeting with $4.8 million in free cash, extremely healthy number. We're very lucky to be able to do again at this town meeting. So with the articles, if they pass as expected or as we hope, we're going to spend about $5.9 million in our excess levy capacity and $2.8 million in our free cash. As I mentioned, that free cash is to apply toward the tax rate. So it leaves us with some very healthy numbers at the end result of this town meeting. We're going to end with about $3.8 million in excess levy capacity and about $2 million in free cash to enter the next town meeting. So just to wrap up, this is some of our objectives at the beginning of the year and I'm proud to put this slide up. Taxpayer relief. We're going to have $3.8 million in taxpayer relief under the levy capacity. That is amazing. I remember at $1.8 million, we were afraid to do it because we didn't think we'd be able to maintain it. And year after year, we've not only matched it, but we've increased it to an unbelievable amount of $3.8 million. And for anyone who wonders what excess levy capacity is, that is the ability that the state says that we can tax the Milford taxpayers. We have $3.8 million under that amount and we still provide the great services that we do to this town and we don't tax our taxpayers to the absolute limit, which I'm very, very proud of. Capital projects, as I mentioned earlier, we have $1.5 million that we expected to win. We are going to spend on our capital expenditures. And stabilization contributions at $2.9 million, sticking that into your piggy bank is a pretty successful year. So we exceeded our hopes on that. So with that being said, with the hard work of the selectmen, the finance team, department heads and my finance committee, we're in a very healthy position and I thank all of you for your time.
Just a further reminder, again, with trying to iron out the ability of people to address the meeting from the aisles if they want to be recognized. Those people that are registered voters who are not town meeting members would sit in the rear. And if you want to speak, you'll have to get in line, but I would ask you to identify yourself when you speak, your name and what precinct you're in so we can make sure we're, people that are addressing the meeting or anyone that wants to make a motion, an amendment to a motion, has to be a registered vote, has to be a town meeting member. Okay? So, and if you're not a town meeting resident, if you're not a resident of the town of Milford, you will require unanimous consent to address the meeting also. Okay. Having said that, what is the pleasure of the meeting? Article one.
Town meeting, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for any and all items required to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's EPA Stormwater General Permit for the stormwater discharges from the small municipal separate storm sewer system, phase two of the permit.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for any and all items required to ensure that the town remains in compliance with the Environmental Protection Agency's Stormwater General Permit for stormwater discharges from small municipal separate storm sewer systems, phase two of the permit. Finance committee recommendation is?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. If approved, the funding will be used to meet the continued requirements of the EPA's MS-IV Phase II General Permit for Stormwater Discharge, which requires the town to reduce pollutants and phosphorus load to wetlands and waterways. This is the second year of the Phase II portion of the permit, which will take place over the next 20 years. The first five years are essential to the planning and designing portion of the permit. The following 15 years is the implementation of the five-year plan, such as construction of stormwater basins, installation of drainage components and building infrastructure to treat the stormwater. The planning portion of the permit requires such items as continued mapping of the existing drainage system and outfalls, complete dry weather investigations and water quality testing of 45 outfalls, complete weather, complete wet weather investigations and water quality testing for 20 outfalls, evaluation of town-owned facilities, evaluation of housekeeping, BMPs, et cetera. The MS-IV Operations and Maintenance Plan, evaluate parks and open space maintenance and management plan, highway garage stormwater pollution prevention plan, annual training of employees and annual reports, best practices, continuous stormwater management plan, townwide, and illicit discharge detection and elimination program, continued efforts of managing and maintaining existing stormwater infrastructure as needed and public education outreach programs, social media, et cetera. Ask for your support in this article.
Any other voter can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $31,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing 24 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus bottles.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $31,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing 24 Scott self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This funding will allow us to replace 24 breathing air cylinders that we use for interior firefighting or hazardous atmospheres. We hope for your support in this article.
Any other voter can be heard. Voter. Just identify yourself.
Charles Clark, Precinct One. I come before you with mixed emotions about this article. Number one, I am in favor of protecting our firefighters. My main question is the mathematics of this program. From the finance committee, you say it's going to cost $31,000. In the write-up, it says that the 24 bottles cost $1,200 each. Do the mathematics, that comes out to $28,800. My question is, where's the other $2,200 going? I'd like either the finance committee or the fire chief to give me an answer.
Any other voter can be heard.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I believe the price of the cylinder is $1,260 per cylinder. I also believe that there was probably not an exact figure put in because of the time and bid prices, we weren't sure of the exact amount, but I assure you that we're purchasing 24 cylinders because they're going to expire. They're only good for a certain lifespan and we're coming up on that date now.
Any other voter can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article three, Mr. Walter.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to be used to replenish the compensated absence fund.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $250,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to be used to replenish the compensated absence fund, Fund 2425. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. I understand the Board of Selectmen unanimously is in favor of this also. Mr. Walsh.
Town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of $250,000 to replenish this fund, which is used to make any required payments under union contract for unused sick leave to our retiring police and firemen. We could have a number of police and fire personnel retiring over the next year and the town needs to add to this fund in order to meet our obligation to our retiring police and firemen. I urge your support for this article.
Any other voter can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article four. Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.1, Definitions of the Zoning Bylaw relating to Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers as follows. By replacing the definition of medical marijuana, in the definition of Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, the words, quote, "a not-for-profit entity," end of quote, with the words, quote, "an entity," end of quote.
Motion made in second, the town vote to amend Section 4.1, Definitions of the Zoning Bylaw relating to Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers as follows. By replacing in the definition Medical Marijuana Treatment Center, the words, quotation marks, "a not-for-profit entity," end of quotation, with the words, quotation marks, "an entity," end of quotation. Any voter can be heard. Oh, I'm sorry. Planning board recommendation first.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board on October 1st, 2019, conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing regarding the subject of Article Four, at which time the planning board voted four in favor with one abstention to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Four is the application of Syrah Naturals, Inc. to amend Section 4.1, Definitions of the Zoning Bylaw related to Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers. The planning board recommends Article Four be adopted as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Any other voter can be heard. Attorney Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jerry Moody, Precinct Six. This is an effort to, by Syrah Naturals, which has a marijuana cultivation facility in Milford, to help bring our bylaw back into consistency with state law. Back in 2012, the Commonwealth first permitted, under detailed statutes and regulations, medical marijuana usage in facilities, and at that time, they required that they be operated by a nonprofit entity. Since that time, well, after that, the town, consistent with that, adopted a bylaw, which is currently in effect and consistent with the state law at that time, required to be operated by a nonprofit entity. Since that time, the Commonwealth has amended the law, now allowing it to be operated by any entity, business or nonprofit. And Syrah Naturals is simply trying to make sure, bring us into consistency with that law. Right now, arguably, our bylaw is no longer consistent with state law. This will simply make it consistent with state law. This has nothing to do with marijuana sales or anything else. That was prohibited in Milford, as you know, several years ago by townwide vote. So this simply would allow the change in the bylaw so these could be operated by a for-profit entity if that entity sees fit. Thank you.
Any other voter can be heard. If not, the question comes upon the motion, which is an amendment to a zoning bylaw. It requires a two-thirds vote. Since no one has spoken in opposition, I will take a voice vote. If that is not unanimous, then the individual precincts will be polled. And I'm not trying to influence you one way or the other, but again, no one has spoken in opposition and purposes of speeding up the meeting. All those in favor of the motion manifest by saying aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Article five.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for any and all items required to evaluate, design, repair, and construct any portion of the Godfrey Brook that runs from West Street to Water Street.
Motion made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for any and all items required to evaluate, design, repair, and construct any portion of Godfrey Brook that runs from West Street to Water Street. What about the parentheses there, Scott? I've got inclusive of the Charles Street, of the Church Street area?
Yes.
Okay. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Any vote to be heard? Scott?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. If approved, the funding will be used to continue the efforts of reconstructing the Godfrey Brook. The area of concern is between West Street and Water Street. The reconstruction will repair or replace the sidewalls and increase hydraulic capacity to better manage flooding associated with the Brook. This area expands upon previous efforts that have taken place over many years to rehabilitate the Godfrey Brook. This area is prone to flooding and is problematic to the local residents and the highway department. I ask your support on this article. Thanks.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six. Mr. Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm Bill Buckley, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to dedicate funds received from community host agreement between the Town of Milford and Syrah Naturals, Inc., to the stabilization fund.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to dedicate funds received from the community host agreement between the Town of Milford and Syrah Naturals, Inc., to the town stabilization fund. Finance committee recommendation?
It's favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In March of last year, the town entered into a five-year host agreement, coast community agreement with Syrah Naturals, a registered marijuana dispensary operating at 13 Commercial Way. Under this agreement, Syrah Naturals agreed to pay $250 per year to the town to address any direct impacts of operation of the facility. This article simply seeks to place those funds received from Syrah Naturals into a stabilization, into the stabilization fund, and I would urge your support for this article. Thank you very much.
Any vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seven.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Article seven, I move the town, the town vote to amend Section 1.5 of the personnel bylaws by inserting a new Section 1.5A as follows. Under special circumstances, positions classified, currently classified as full-time may need to be filled on a part-time schedule basis. In instances, in such instances, the salary position may be prorated to allow compensation for the full, for the part-time employee to be paid on an hourly basis.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to amend Section 5.1 of the personnel bylaws by inserting a new Section 5.1A as follows. Under special circumstances, positions currently classified as full-time may need to be filled on a part-time schedule basis. In such instances, the salaried position may be prorated to allow compensation for the part-time employee to be paid on an hourly basis. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Quite simply, there are times when we need to take a, take a full-time position, break it up, and we're only going to fill it on a part-time basis, either seasonally or part-time. It basically takes, as an example, a $30,000 a year job allows us to pay them at $15 an hour, which is the hourly rate that would ultimately translate into $30,000 a year for a shorter period of time than what would constitute full-time. There's no ultimate financial impact on this.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eight. Mr. Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw relating to crematory uses, as noted here and after. By adding in Section 2.3 Use Regulation Schedule, references to crematory uses as follows. Section 2.3.
I'll ask Mr. Moody if it's exactly as appears in the warrant that was published. It is. Okay. Any vote to be heard on the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes with, motion to dispense with reading of the remainder of the motion. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Planning board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Milford Planning Board on October 1st, 2019, conducted a duly posted and noted public hearing regarding the subject of Article Eight, at which time the Planning Board voted unanimously to vote, to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article Eight is the application of the proprietors of the Pine Grove Cemetery to amend Section 2.3 Use Regulations and Section 4.1 Definitions of the Zoning Bylaw by providing for crematories as a secondary accessory use to a cemetery. The Planning Board recommends Article Eight be adopted as printed in the warrant. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Yes, Attorney Moody.
Again, Jerry Moody, Precinct Six. And Mr. Moderator, with your permission and the permission of the body, I'd like to, Attorney Antonellis, who represents the association, would like to speak on this, so I defer to him at this time.
Request made for Attorney Antonellis, who represents the, petition is to address the meeting. Attorney Antonellis is not a resident of the Town of Milford. Thus, would require the unanimous consent of the body to address the meeting. Does any vote feel in opposition to Attorney Antonellis addressing the meeting? Hearing done. Joe?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Members of the Board of Selectmen, town meeting members, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I was contacted by the proprietors of the Pine Grove Cemetery, which is a charitable organization. The cemetery, like many cemeteries in Massachusetts, is facing constraints relative to size. There is a trend now in society to provide for cremation services as part of traditional burial services for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is cost. The cemetery thinks that the addition of a crematory there will do two things, provide an alternative for residents in the Town of Milford to have a crematory service close by, and secondly, to provide additional income for them to maintain the cemetery, which gets more and more expensive each year. I do not believe there is a crematory in Worcester County other than in the city of Worcester. They're very rare in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The way the article has been set up, it would allow any cemetery in the town to have as an accessory use. Simple as that. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Nero.
Ladies and gentlemen, it appears that we're allowing, I don't know how many cemeteries, we haven't been told, but let's presume there's six in the Town of Milford. We're allowing six crematoriums, burning of bodies, in the Town of Milford. If anyone has ever been near a crematorium, the odor is absolutely unbelievable. It may be okay if you put it in a mile or two away from a residential area, but I don't think you seriously want to authorize any, at any time, six crematoriums. If they came, if the offer of the article was for one, then there would be serious consideration, and I would listen to any proposal on that one. But to authorize every area of this town, and the districts are across the top, all residential areas in the Town of Milford, to now have a crematorium nearby appears to be ridiculous. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Voter in Precinct One, is it back there? Can't see the sign there. What is it, six? Charles.
Charles Clark, Precinct One. I want to second the statements made by Mr. Nero as far as the stench would be, but my question is, where in the cemetery would this crematory be? And they talk about expanding the burials for cremation. Where and how? I mean, I have family that's buried at Vernon Grove, and if it's going to disrupt their burial site, I would like to know about it. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which again is an amendment to our zoning bylaw, thus requiring a two-thirds vote. In this case, since people have spoken in opposition, I will take a standing vote. All those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct One.
Precinct One, three in favor, ten opposed.
Precinct One, three in favor, ten opposed. Precinct Two.
Four in favor, four opposed.
Precinct Two, four in favor, four opposed. Precinct Three.
Five in favor, thirteen opposed.
Precinct Five, Precinct Three, five in favor, thirteen opposed. Precinct Four.
Six in favor, six opposed.
Precinct Four, six in favor, six opposed. Precinct Five.
Seven in favor, eleven opposed.
I'm sorry, four in favor?
Seven in favor.
Seven, seven in favor. How many opposed?
Eleven.
Eleven. Seven in favor, eleven opposed. Precinct Six.
Eleven in favor, five opposed.
Precinct Six, eleven in favor, five opposed. Precinct Seven.
Ten in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct Seven, ten in favor, seven opposed. Precinct Eight.
Seven in favor, seven opposed.
Precinct Eight, seven in favor, seven opposed. At large.
Fourteen in favor, three opposed.
At large, fourteen in favor, three opposed. Sixty-seven having voted in the affirmative, sixty-six in the negative. The necessary two-thirds has not been acquired, therefore, the motion is defeated. Next article, which would be Article Nine. Selectman Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to upgrade the audiovisual system in Upper Town Hall.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to upgrade the audiovisual system in Upper Town Hall. Finance committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. The Selectmen have voted three zero in favor. Selectman Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This article seeks the sum of $40,000 to install a new, simple-to-use visual video projection system in Upper Town Hall. The system will provide the ability to project computer images, play a Blu-ray or a DVD, and stream content from the Internet. The system will be comprised of a new screen, a projector mounted to the front of the balcony, railing, and a wall-mounted touch panel. All video devices will reside in existing 21-space-floor standing equipment racks. Controls will include switching video sources, lowering and raising the screen, volume control, power on and off of the projection system. The installation of a new system will enhance and improve the ability of town meeting members to receive information at town meeting. It will also allow Town Hall to be utilized for other events, such as showing of movies and conferences. I urge your support.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. I might say that the audio was really improved for this particular session. I was just checking with the town clerk. In previous meetings, it was very difficult to hear what the speakers were saying, but now it's loud and clear, so I appreciate the upgrade of the system. Okay, Article 10. 10, yes. Mr. Bontempo.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Michelangelo Bontempo, Precinct Four. I move that the town vote to amend its action under Article 62 of the March 16th, 1959 Annual Town Meeting, and Article 28 of the June 15th, 1987 Annual Town Meeting by adding the following. Any person appointed as a member or alternate member of the Personnel Board shall be a legal resident of the Town of Milford. A member or alternate member who ceases to be a legal resident of the Town shall be removed upon the date of his/her change of legal residence from the Town. A member or alternate member who ceases to be a legal resident of the Town shall notify the Board of Selectmen within 15 days of the date of his/her change of legal residence from the Town. A member or alternate member may be removed by the Board of Selectmen only for cause, after notice, and an opportunity to be heard.
Motion made and seconded the town vote to amend the action taken under Article 62 of the March 16th, 1959 Annual Town Meeting, and Article 28 of the June 15th, 1987 Annual Town Meeting by adding the following. Any person appointed as a member or alternate member of the Personnel Board shall be a legal resident of the Town of Milford. A member or alternate member who ceases to be a legal resident of the Town shall be removed upon the date of his or her change of legal residence from the Town. A member or alternate member who ceases to be a legal resident of the Town shall notify the Board of Selectmen within 15 days of the date of his or her change of legal residence from the Town. A member or alternate member may be removed by the Board of Selectmen only for cause, after notice, and an opportunity to be heard. Does the finance committee have a recommendation? Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Okay, sponsor?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article came about from the confusion which arose on June 25th, 2018, when the Board of Selectmen removed a member of the Personnel Board for not being a resident of the Town. That member filed suit against the Town and two members of the Board of Selectmen. That suit was settled on November 28th, 2018, and the Town of Milford and the two named Selectmen agreed not to remove any Personnel Board member for any reason not authorized by law and/or unless a provision for removal is approved by a town meeting vote to amend the Town's personnel bylaws. The question of residency came up again at the May 16th.
The question of residency came up again at the May sixth, two thousand nineteen Board of Selectmen meeting, when another Personnel Board member's residency in Milford was questioned by the third member of the Board of Selectmen. So this has gotten to be, in my opinion, a little ridiculous with this residency issue. So as we say in the Italian, basta così, enough of this. One hundred sixteen registered voters signed a petition to place this article on the warrant and are asking Town Meeting Members to use a little common sense. The motion before us would do two things. The first would clarify a member's status with respect to his or her legal residence. So in order to be appointed, you simply have to be a legal resident of the town of Milford, and once you cease to be a legal resident of the town of Milford, you're off the board. The second allows the Board of Selectmen to remove a member or alternate member from the Personnel Board only for cause after that member has been notified and given an opportunity to be heard. So the question now, just wanted to find for you, is what legal residence is in the town of Massachusetts? And this definition comes from the Mass.gov, excuse me, mass.gov website. Your legal residence is your true home or main residence. You may have multiple residences at one time, but only one legal residence. You can't choose to make your home one place for general living purposes and another for tax purposes. Your legal residence is usually where you maintain your most important family, social, economic, political, and religious ties, and it depends on all the facts and circumstances per case, including good faith. So first and foremost, your legal residence is your home you use for your general living and tax purposes. So even after changing your legal residence to another town, quite frequently, a lot of us still have family ties, social, economic, political ties, and religious ties to that former town, but still, under the law, you are no longer a legal resident of your former town. Board of Selectmen have appointed honorable men and women of this town to the Personnel Board, and the petitioners ask that the members and the alternate members of the Personnel Board act in good faith and do the honorable thing and resign from the Board when they are no longer a legal resident of the town. I ask that you favorably vote on this main motion. Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I wanted to say that I do support the proposed article. I think we're talking about a significant loophole that needs to be changed. Is that better? Oh, sorry. Brian Cole, Precinct Eight, excuse me. Sorry. I do support the proposed article, but I wonder if this is the best way to address this problem, or if this is just addressing the symptoms. You know, we're spending a lot of time at these meetings debating structural changes to our bylaws, to say nothing of the time, energy, and resources that our Selectmen are investing in clarifying a lot of these points. And that's why I think it's time to call a Home Rule Charter Commission, to go through the entire hodgepodge of state statutes and bylaws and traditions that make up how our town is governed. So as we discuss this article, and Article fifteen, and Article twenty-two, and Article thirty-one, and all the Personnel Bylaw changes, I want you to ask yourself, you know, do we want to keep up this sort of whack-a-mole approach and address these problems only after they've caused headaches? Or do we want to say, basta così? Be proactive and try to get ahead of the game? Keep that in mind.
Any other vote to be heard?
Edward Bertorelli, Precinct Two, Town Meeting Member. In other circumstances, I think I would be totally in favor of this article, but there's one major problem with it. It's basically government by grievance, and government by grievance doesn't work. We see how it's working, and Washington are not working. Look at the pandemonium we're going through now. If this were a valid argument, it should apply to every appointed board. It's my understanding that the Board of Selectmen in June appointed approximately fifty members to appointed boards in the town, fifty members per year. Apparently, this doesn't apply to them. To me, this article should be defeated, brought up again in the regular Town Meeting, and have that application of the rule applied to all the appointed members of the board, so that it's not basically targeting any particular person or any board. In addition, residency in Massachusetts is a very tricky thing. I've had a lot of experience in it. When I served as the Treasurer of the Mass Republican Party, we had a major controversy of whether our own National Committee man lived in Massachusetts. Well, we quickly found out that Massachusetts has the most lenient residency laws around. In fact, a statement that you intended to move back to Massachusetts was interpreted by some judges as ruling that you did live here. So I think we have to carefully, if we're going to look at what residency is, we're going to have to carefully craft the explanation and consistent, not just with what's on mass.gov, but get an opinion from the Attorney General's office, or I guess the Secretary of State's office more important, to exactly what we would need in there to make this happen. But again, I'd suggest you pass it over or defeat it, bring it back reformed, so that it applies to all the appointed boards for the regular Town Meeting in the spring, and also refine it with the language you need from the Secretary of State's office to make it a foolproof argument. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Michael Aganian, Precinct Two. I do not support the article as written, however, I do support its intent, and as a former speaker just said, I think this should apply to all applicable boards where necessary. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Moderator. Town Council.
Charles Baudy, Town Council, Member-at-Large. Ladies and gentlemen, I think it is well worth our examination as to our bylaws and how they apply to residency for all boards, not just for the Personnel Board. And I think that we need to establish within our bylaw a test or a set of parameters as to what legal residency is. What we have here is a great attempt at trying to solve what we already seem to have as a problem. It has come up, as is well pointed out by the proponent, at least twice within the past year. But I don't think this is the solution to all of that. It may solve it for a moment, but I suggest to you, what it does is it takes already a muddy and cloudy issue and just changes the mud and clouds around and doesn't really solve it. What I would suggest is that this item be defeated, this article defeated this evening, and then perhaps revisited with an idea towards putting in some more specific language as to what the town, for purposes of this bylaw, would like to look at as what is evidence of residency and some sort of a litmus test. I don't think it's ever going to be a black-and-white test, but I think we can do better than this. I'm grateful that this has been proposed, it's been brought forward. I just don't think this is the right time for this as a solution, but a solution should be found, and I think we can do it. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is defeated. Mr. Bon Tempo.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, thank you. I move that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the following seventeen town-owned parcels totaling one hundred and fifty-four point five-two acres to the Milford Conservation Commission.
Motion has been made in second. We waive the reading of the remainder of the motion. Last, Mr. Bon Tempo, if it's exactly as appears in the warrant?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
It's exactly as appears in the warrant that was mailed to every Town Meeting member. All those in favor of dispensing manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Bon Tempo.
Thank you. The purpose thereof is to preserve said parcels for water resource protection, open space protection, and conservation purposes due to their location within the headwaters of the Charles River and the biocore area as designated by the Milford Comprehensive Plan. Within the headwaters of the Charles River between the Hopkinton Town Line and Interstate four ninety-five, the town of Milford owns twenty-two parcels totaling some four hundred and seventy-nine point seven-one acres overall. Of those twenty-two parcels, four parcels totaling one hundred and thirty-nine point five acres are currently under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, as well as the one hundred and eighty-five point six-nine acre Walden Woods Open Space Parcel that is also formally protected by a conservation restriction. Article eleven seeks to transfer the jurisdiction of the remaining seventeen town-owned parcels that total one hundred and fifty-four point five-two acres to the Conservation Commission. The seventeen parcels are important to the town due to their location within the headwaters of the Charles River and within the surface water protection zones. In addition to their importance for water resource protection, they are crucial for open space protection and conservation purposes in part because they are adjacent to other town conservation lands. All of the parcels are also located in the biocore area as designated by the Comprehensive Plan. Adopting this article will bring all four hundred and seventy-nine point seven-one acres of town-owned land in the headwater area under protection. Therefore, the Conservation Commission urges your approval of Article eleven as printed in the warrant.
Any other vote to be heard?
Jamie Wheelock, Precinct Five, and I really like conservation land, and in general, I would like to see this land under Conservation Commission control at some point in time, but I think there's no need to rush into transferring this land to conservation right now. I think something that would be really worth doing would be waiting for the resolution of the Water Company purchase, because they own a heck of a lot of land all over town and in that vicinity, and if Milford had a more thoughtful, comprehensive land use plan, we could figure out ways to use those seventeen parcels plus the Water Company land if we choose to buy the Water Company in a way that might be more imaginative, creative, thoughtful. I'm not literally talking about building on the land, but I'm just talking about approaching all that space over there more thoughtfully than just quickly pulling it into Conservation Commission. So I would say, let's not rush into this. Let's wait till after the Water Company deal is resolved, one way or the other, and then spend some time thinking about creative land use policies, keeping in mind that there's already the Walden Woods subdivision up there, or whatever you want to call that technically, planned residential development. There's the possibility of the forty-B up above Restaurant Depot. There's multiple parcels of private property in the general vicinity, a gas station, lots of other things going on there, and we could look at a more thoughtful way to use those parcels. Thanks.
Any other vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Abrahamson, Precinct Four. I disagree with the timing effort that was just mentioned. This is a natural resources plan of Milford, Mass. that was approved back in the early seven, mid-seventies, which, one of the recommendations, the number-one priority area, was this entire watershed area that's included on that map over there and includes all these parcels. The recommendation of this plan was to protect all that property for water resources, for the aquifer protection plan, and the target date for this plan to be implemented was nineteen seventy-seven. So we're way behind the schedule of what, this was approved by the town, I believe. I know, I worked on it. I tried to look up to see if it was actually approved by Town Meeting, but it's something that went through all the boards back then, and I believe also that the regular Town Open Space Plan also recommends similar recommendations. I strongly urge you to approve this article so that we can start to protect these properties that we stated back in nineteen seventy-seven that we needed to protect them. So I strongly vote for either protect this plan and vote favorable.
Any other vote to be heard?
Town Meeting Members, I urge you to support this article. What better place to have land that's associated with our water rights and water protection areas than to have it under the Conservation Commission? I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented, which is to approve that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty, Section fifteen, to transfer the care, custody, and jurisdiction of the seventeen town-owned parcels totaling one hundred and fifty-four point fifty-two acres to the Milford Conservation Commission as enumerated in the warrant that you have before you. The purpose thereof is to preserve said parcels for water resource protection, open space protection, and conservation purposes due to their location within the headwaters of the Charles River and the biocore area as designated in the Milford Comprehensive Plan. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article twelve. Motion made in second. We pass over Article twelve. Motion to pass over is debatable. Any vote to be heard? It's an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Does any vote to be heard on the motion to pass over Article twelve? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article twelve. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion to pass over is carried. Article thirteen. Selectman Kingke.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to be used for payment for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters, to be deposited to the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Funds to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one hundred and/or one eleven F.
Motion made in second, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be sent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen to be used for payment for medical bills and other expenses incurred resulting from injuries to police officers or firefighters, to be deposited in, to the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, funds, to be utilized for purposes of paying expenses incurred under General Law's Chapter forty-one, Sections one hundred and/or one eleven F. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Kingke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under the Governor's Modernization Act, the town created a special leave indemnity fund for our police and fire personnel injured on duty. This article seeks the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement this fund to pay medical bills and other expenses. The fund was last supplemented over two years ago.
The fund was last supplemented over two years ago. This is something that's extremely difficult to budget for, and therefore it needs to be supplemented periodically to ensure the town has sufficient funds to pay these costs. Should the town receive a recovery from a third party found to be responsible for any injury, then the third-party recovery can be placed back into this account if it is for medical expenses. Salary recoveries would be placed in the general fund. I ask for your support. Excuse me. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Wheelock. If you're the only person that's going to speak, give me a yell too so that I can hear you before you get in the aisle, right?
Jamie Wheelock, Precinct Five. This is my regular reminder that someday Milford will adopt private flag people to do work that is doable by private flag people, which is not all police details on all roads, but there are roads that are suitable for private flag contractors. Right now, we have tremendously overqualified people doing flag work, and also their primary job pays a tremendous salary, and maybe one job should be enough. I'm not opposed to the injured reserve fund. I'm just saying the town should consider transferring liability to private contractors, giving work to people who need a job doing flag work, detail work, when possible, and potentially saving our liability on those unfortunate circumstances where things happen to the flagman. Thanks.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Edward Burtarali, Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Library Trustees to be used for the purpose of replacing the children's room carpeting at the Milford Town Library.
Motion made, and secondly, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Library Trustees to be used for the purpose of replacing the children's room carpeting at the Milford Town Library. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Burtaroli.
Thank you, town meeting members, selectmen, and Finance Committee members. The carpeting that's in the children's room was done, replaced in the last renovation of the library, which is approximately ten years ago. And a funny aside, I think it's a tribute to the children of Milford that in ten years they've worn the carpet out and it's time to be replaced. It's a very busy room, and as we say, ten years, the carpet needs to be replaced. I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen. Mr. Montempel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Montempel, Precinct Four. I move that the town vote to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation in relation to the hiring of a police chief, which legislation would provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary as to the appointment of any police chief in the town of Milford, the Board of Selectmen shall only appoint from among such list of finalists as recommended by the Police Chief Selection Review Committee so authorized under the general bylaws of the town. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Motion made, and secondly, the town vote to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation in relation to the hiring of a chief of police, which legislation would provide substantially as follows. Section one, notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary as to the appointment of any police chief in the town of Milford, the Board of Selectmen shall only appoint from among such list of finalists as recommended by the Police Chief Selection Review Committee as authorized under the general bylaws of the town. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
No, refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Mr. Montempel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, whenever there is a vacancy or the anticipation of a vacancy in the position of police chief, the Police Chief Selection Bylaw sets forth the process by which candidates are selected for the position of police chief. The bylaw was enacted at the May nineteen ninety-eight annual town meeting. However, the language of the bylaw is clear with respect to the fact that the Board of Selectmen are not legally obligated to choose a police chief from the selected candidates. The relevant subsections from Section Three B of the bylaw are as follows. Subsection six, select and recommend three to five finalists to the Board of Selectmen. Such recommendations shall be in writing and unranked. Subsection seven, the Board of Selectmen shall appoint a chief of police as soon as is reasonably possible after receipt of said recommendations. So again, there is no specific language in the bylaw that states the Board of Selectmen must appoint a police chief from the finalists. Hundred and fifteen registered voters signed a petition to place this article in a warrant asking town meeting to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation stating that the Board of Selectmen must appoint a police chief from the finalists provided by the Selection Review Committee. The Selection Review Committee has met twelve times since March twelfth. They have added to the bylaws minimum criteria for the position of police chief to strengthen those criteria. With the help of Maureen Giffen, Human Resources Director, they have created job description and job posting that have been approved by the Personnel Board and the Board of Selectmen. They should be spending about forty-three thousand dollars of the fifty thousand dollars in funds that town meeting appropriated for this search process. They have contracted, based on performance and not the lowest bid, the services of research management associates, a firm of impeccable reputation and qualifications, and a leading provider of fire and police promotional examination services to conduct an assessment and in-depth background investigation of the finalists. And finally, they should have the list of three to five candidates for the Board of Selectmen's consideration by the end of January two thousand twenty. Dino Di Bartolomeis, Chairman of the Selection Review Committee, has frequently stated that this process will result in the most extremely qualified and experienced candidate becoming the next chief of police for the town of Milford. For the Board of Selectmen not to select from the Selection Review Committee's recommendations would simply be a disservice to the candidates and to the committee. The petitioners are asking that town meeting use again its common sense and ensure that the result positively reflects the hard work and effort that the Selection Review Committee has put into this process. I ask that you vote favorably for this motion. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening, town meeting members. I don't know where the distrust comes from, but I absolutely intend to follow the recommendations of the Selection Committee. They're a hard-working group, working very hard and diligent, working with a well-known consultancy group. The only question that I have is, and I'd defer to town council, is whether the bylaw is legal. We've recently identified and found out through the court system that anybody, legislative or judicial, cannot impede the appointment of the members of the Board of Selectmen. I'm simply here to tell you what my intent is. So I want you to understand that that is my intent. I can't speak for everybody on the board, but I do want to speak for myself, and I'm not entirely clear this bylaw is legal. I think it will be challenged when it reaches the Attorney General's, as we've recently found out in recent court cases. Thank you.
Is there any other vote to care to be heard? Hold on, Precinct, in the back there.
Mike Lagajanian, Precinct Two. I support the intent of this article, but I actually have a question for town council or the sponsor. When I read this article, it says the Board of Selectmen has to choose from the Selection Committee, which I think is great. However, it says any chief. So my question is, if the chief becomes incapacitated, terminated, or unavailable, would this bylaw change stop the Board of Selectmen appointing an interim police chief immediately?
Any vote to care to address the body? Mr. Moderator. Town Council.
Again, members, Charles Baudy, Town Council, Member-at-Large. To answer the question, we would only get to this stage if a police chief selection committee were to be appointed. If there were a sudden loss of the police chief in the town, we wouldn't necessarily wait to convene, go through the process of appointing a committee, having the town moderator make his selections for appointment, the selectmen, and so forth, and all the ex-official members. It would be too time-consuming, and it would result in discord and disorganization among the police force in the town. That's not what is intended by this police chief selection bylaw. But aside from that, I'd like to address, just for one moment, the simple fact that the appointing authority of the chief of police in the town of Milford, as in every town within the Commonwealth, is its Board of Selectmen. The reason for that is because the Board of Selectmen are popularly elected and therefore directly accountable to the voters and the taxpayers of the town, as opposed to, and this is not said with any disrespect for, but as opposed to, an appointed committee over which the voters, aside from having elected people in the first instance, have no say, and therefore that board has no accountability. In this instance, we have a wonderful board that's doing the job. They're doing it well. They're doing it diligently, and they've had great disagreement. Nonetheless, they've progressed well. I do want to say, I have no specific opposition, in fact, I encourage this, I think it's wise to suggest to the Board of Selectmen that if we're going through the expense and the time and the process of having a police chief selection committee review and winnow down the applicant pool to the necessary final candidates, that we should be mindful of that and attentive to that. That should be very informative and influencing on the decisions that are made in the hiring process. But I don't want anyone to come away tonight thinking that if we were to pass this, that therefore it would handcuff the selectmen, because I would argue to you that it does not. And I would argue to you that it does not, simply based, if nothing else, on the recent outcome of the case in Worcester Superior Court. So I'm in favor of this. I recommend it to you. I think it's wise guidance for the Board of Selectmen. I do not think, however, that even if it were adopted this evening, that it would necessarily force them, them being the Board of Selectmen, to choose only those people. I think that their authority, as the executive branch of government, as vested in them by the voters of the town, is what is paramount here. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Montempel.
I just want to make a couple points with respect to the history of this body in relation to what it has done with the Board of Selectmen and their authority vis-à-vis the Police Department as well as the police chief. Town meeting has adopted specific state statutes and enacted its own bylaws that, again, have limited what the Police, Board of Selectmen can do with the police chief and the Police Department. Prior to nineteen twenty-five, the Board of Selectmen had authority to appoint an individual to be a police officer, any individual, promote and terminate police officers, appoint a competent person to act as chief of police, and they could make rules and regulations for the government and discipline of the Police Department. At the May nineteen twenty-five annual town meeting, the town accepted civil service for the Police Department and the chief of police under General Laws, Chapter Thirty-one, Section Forty-eight. Thereafter, the Board of Selectmen were limited to appointing an individual to be a police officer who had passed a civil service examination, promote police officers based upon the civil service list for sergeants and lieutenants, appoint a chief of police based on the civil service list. So the town, by adopting civil service, limited the pool and who the Board of Selectmen could appoint to these various positions and also promote. At the March nineteen fifty-five annual town meeting, the town accepted the so-called strong police chief statute, which is General Laws, Chapter Forty-one, Section Ninety-seven A, which effectively repealed Article Seven of the general bylaws of the town. Thereafter, the Board of Selectmen were limited to appointing an officer to be the chief of police. No longer was that competent person the standard. Also, the approving, the regulations governing the Police Department, excuse me, the Board of Selectmen were limited to approving the regulations governing the Police Department made by the chief of police. They were no longer the sole authority for making the rules and regulations for the Police Department. At the May nineteen ninety-eight annual town meeting, the town rescinded the action taken at the May nineteen twenty-five annual town meeting where the town accepted civil service for the police chief. Town meeting took this action in anticipation of passing the Police Chief Selection Bylaw. And this bylaw allowed the Selection Review Committee to conduct a nationwide search, and therefore the Board of Selectmen were not limited to appointing a new police chief of police from the civil service list. Now, again, the civil service list back then, the police chief were limited, again, to appointing people that, based upon the structure of the Milford Police Department command structure, was lieutenants and above. At the October two thousand and one special town meeting, the town voted to petition the General Court for the chief of police to be the appointing authority. This special legislation became Chapter One Forty-five of the Acts of two thousand and two. Thereafter, the Board of Selectmen had no authority to appoint an individual to be a police officer, promote police officers, discipline police officers, and terminate police officers. All that authority was granted to the chief of police. So again, past practice by this body has been to enact or adopt legislation that has in one way or another limited what the Board of Selectmen can do with respect to the Police Department and the chief of police. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Kinggate.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, just as one member of the Board of Selectmen, I just want to publicly let you know that in nineteen ninety-eight, I was a town meeting member, and I supported the Police Chief Search Committee article then. I still stand by it. I'm glad my friend from West Walnut Street and me can finally agree on something. I think this is a good move. I think the intent is there. These people are doing a lot of work, and I will be choosing someone from those three to five finalists. I certainly don't mind if we make that official, if it's challenged down the road. I think it's still a message to the board that this is the way to go, and all I could do is let you know that that is my intent. And something would have to be really egregious for me to go outside of that, and I think that that'll be caught in anything that the committee is doing with background checks and things of that nature. So despite all the rumors and everything else that's out there, I plan on following the article and the bylaw. I supported it in nineteen ninety-eight, and I stand by that today. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Dr. Richard Heller, Precinct One, also on the Police Chief Selection Committee. It's probably the first time in a long time. I'd like to thank Mr. Kinggate for support of this article. The committee we have is a very diverse committee. As Mr. Montempel pointed out, we've met twelve times already. We're going to be meeting a lot between November nineteenth and probably the end of January. Everybody on the committee takes this very seriously. Police chief is a very important position in the town of Milford, and I urge that you support this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Selectman Walsh.
Town meeting members, to me, this is a very, very... Town Meeting Members, to me, this is a very, very simple, they should make these for taller people, Dan. It's very simple. I support this. The reason I support this is that we put together a committee of very talented people, of very diverse backgrounds, to work to bring us to the point where we can choose our next police chief. We then appropriated $50,000, which has not been used totally yet, to hire a consulting company, and we interviewed multiple, the committee, I should say, interviewed multiple consulting companies, and picked the committee that they believed to be the best to do the police chief search committee. So you've got the good people that are donating their time on the committee level, meeting over and over, as Dr. Heller said. You have the consulting company that's now in town, going through the process. And I, as well, have full intent of choosing from the three to five names that they bring before the Board of the Selectmen. I know how to hire people. I don't know the first thing about hiring a police chief. And so that's what this is all about. That's what this consulting company is about. This is what this committee was put together for. And all this does is assure you, the taxpayers, that we will, as a board, pick from the three to five finalists, that everybody brings to us, the committee and the consulting company, these are your best candidates for your next police chief. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion is carried unanimously.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Kinggate.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue an invitation for bids in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the sale of the former Purchase Street School located at 229 Purchase Street in Milford.
Motion made in second of the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue an invitation for bids in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the sale of the former Purchase Street School located at 229 Purchase Street in Milford. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Selectman Kinggate.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Member, this article seeks to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue an invitation for bids to sell the former Purchase Street School located at 229 Purchase Street. The town has leased this property for many years. By selling the property, the town will no longer be responsible for the maintenance and repairs, and the property will be placed back on the tax roll. I urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Any vote to be heard? Mr. Wheelock.
Jamie Wheelock, 1, Precinct 5. This property has been on the tax roll as long as it's being rented by a commercial entity, so that actually is not going to change. The way that the little blurb in here that's talking about the property is also a little bit strange. There's no pilot payments for that property. It just is the policy of the town of Milford when they rent a town-owned property to a commercial enterprise, that the enterprise covers what would be the tax bill for that property while it's being essentially a market commercial property. So it's being paid for. There's no pilot on that. I would like to have discussions about pilot payments in this town in the future, but we're not going to talk about that right now. Milford doesn't want to be in the business of being a landlord, question mark? Milford is already a huge property manager with the school buildings, approximately a million square feet of school buildings, the town hall, the highway department, the Milford Housing Authority, and I don't know what we specifically refer to the geriatric authority, if they're part of Milford or not, but we are a very large owner-occupier, property manager of the real estate we own, and managing this property is not the craziest, most difficult thing to do. The real issue here about why this property looks so bad on some balance sheets, depending on how you tabulate it, is the current tenant rents 4,000 square feet for $1,100 a month, and presumably they paid even less a while ago. Hopefully, they've been getting rent increases. And yes, we will receive a tremendous windfall from selling the property, which we've owned for, I don't know, 100 years? So yeah, if it could sell for north of $400,000, that would be nice, but you could also see an even bigger appreciation in its value unless you're predicting for a market downturn. But you could just hold on to that property, and we could use it for what we want to use it for later or sell it later. I'm not actually advocating selling this property. I think that we should let the current term, lease term expire, and negotiate a closer-to-market-rate rental agreement with whatever tenant lives that works out of that space. People who know anything about the daycare business knows what it costs to put the youngest kids in daycare for a month. A single kid is paying the rent on that space. And then kids after that are paying salary and whatever. Anyhow, the rent there is a little bit too low to be considered market rate, and I think that we could afford to sit on this property, again, have a more careful, thoughtful land use discussion about what to do with different properties we own, and sell it after thinking about things more comprehensively. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti from Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member. Right now, the town is benefiting from a revenue stream from that building, which could easily be doubled and probably tripled if managed and negotiated properly. Please, if we sell the building, we get a one-time revenue income from the sale of the building, and then minimal taxes from that property. Let's hold on to this revenue stream, negotiate the leases properly, and please vote no on this. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Kryer.
Al Kryer, Precinct 5. I love hearing all the theoreticals, how we can do this, how we can do that. The fact is simple. It's been how many years that we've been trying to figure out how to get revenue out of this building? We've made $7,000 in the last five years. How, you say? We get $11,000. You can call it a pilot. I'm too old to play word games. Call it what you want. We get about 11 grand, which is what the taxes would be. So you get excited, 11 grand. Oh, the boiler went out. Next thing we know, there's $28,000 that we have to pay as the landlord. Well, the next year, we get another $11,000. That's good. Following year, another $11,000. Oh, the roof! And there goes $20,000 we had to pay out. Why do we want to hold a building? And you can say, we're going to double, triple the taxes. This is a Milford business. When have you seen this town meeting hurt a Milford business by doubling or tripling what they're going to pay? We can go through all the fancy theoreticals that we'll get 400,000, we'll make 40 grand a year in interest, or we'll make $1 in interest, or we'll do all this, and we'll make a fortune. I'm looking back over how many years I've been on Rick and Zach's back, saying, what are we going to do about a building that, $7,000 over, what, five years that we've netted? So at the end of the day, we're making a whole $1,500 or $1,200 a year. You know, back to Portuguese math, it doesn't add up. Sorry, you can make all the theoretical programs in the world, and we're going to make all this money. I got 1,200 bucks every year, average. We don't belong in the business of renting schools. And don't forget one thing, we're the landlord. Who's liable if some child gets hurt? Who are they going to go after? The little business owner or the big town that owns it, that's doing financially well? I don't get it. I hate giving up any part of Milford. Anybody who's talked to me knows that, but this makes no sense. You might as well give it to them for free. If we gave the dang building away, we'd be making 11 grand a year net at least. Now we're making 1,200. And don't get me wrong, 1,200 is money, but not enough to keep this building. Please, let us sell this building and get out of this business.
Any other vote to be heard? Mr. Visconti.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Precinct 8, Town Meeting Member. Apparently, the previous speaker has not heard of triple-net leases. This is a moneymaker if it's handled properly. As far as town liability, if the insurance requirements are handled properly, the town will be absolved of any liability. Hang on to this building, create a decent revenue stream, do it the right way, get people who know how to negotiate a lease, handle it. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Motion's been made to pass over Article 17. Motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on the article that was inserted in the warrant. Does any vote to be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over Article 17. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Article 17 is passed over. Article 18.
Mr. Harrison.
Ladies and gentlemen, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to amend the town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as provided as Article 2 of May 20, 2019 Annual Town Meeting as follows: By removing the position of local building inspector from a salaried position in Level 1 and inserting it in a salaried position Level 2.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the Town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as approved as Article 2 of the May 20, 2019 Annual Town Meeting as follows: By removing the position of local building inspector from salaried positions Level 1 and inserting it in salaried positions Level 2. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Harrison.
Thank you. This was a position that was posted for over a year. What we found was that, given the commercial industry and given the construction industry, it was a very, very difficult one to hire for. After reviewing the salary requirements that were where this is currently classified, we found that the position was really, quite frankly, was underpaying based off of what the market was calling for. It says on the right up here that it would be less than $1,000 a year as the budget impact. The dollar amount is actually $596 as the budget impact. Position has been hired for. The person is in. We did have to vote to move them up from a Step 1 up into a Level 4. This allows us to continue to remain competitive within the job market.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article 19.
Mr. Pillip. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $2 million from the Sewer Stabilization Fund 83250 to Fund 40600, to be spent along with funds authorized under Article 32 of the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting under the jurisdiction of the Sewer Commissioners for the design and construction of a municipal sludge treatment facility and further, to rescind the $2 million of authorized and unissued bonds.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of $2 million from the Sewer Stabilization Fund 83250 to Fund 40600, to be spent along with funds authorized under Article 32 of the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting under the jurisdiction of the Sewer Commissioners for the design and construction of a municipal sludge treatment facility and further, to rescind the $2 million of authorized and unissued bonds. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Chris?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At the May 2016 Annual Town Meeting, this body passed an article for $5.2 million for the construction of a new sewer sludge handling facility. At that meeting, we appropriated $3.2 million from the Sewer Stabilization Fund and authorized the borrowing of $2 million. After looking at the current sewer stabilization balance, as well as their retained earnings, the financial team believes the best course of action is to forego the borrowing of $2 million. This will save the enterprise fund the additional interest it would have incurred if we had to borrow these funds. The remaining portion of the project will be funded through the money we withdraw from the stabilization account. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? Question now comes upon the motion. There is a mention of bond authorization, so I'd like to have a unanimous vote on this in case there's the need for a two-thirds vote. No one has spoken in opposition. I'll ask for a voice vote. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carried unanimously.
Town Meeting Members, Mark Nelson, Precinct 7, also the deputy fire chief. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new engine five.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $700,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the fire chief for the purpose of purchasing and equipping a new engine five. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, just for clarification, we're calling this Engine 5, but the fire department only has four fire engines for pumping water for structural fires and other types of incidents. We hope for your support on this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article 21.
I move the town vote to amend Section 5.07 of the Personnel bylaw maternity to read as follows: 5.07 maternity leave without pay may be granted for up to one year by an employee's appointing authority. It is the Town of Milford's policy to adhere to the Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, and the Massachusetts Paternity Leave Act, MPLA, allowing employees up to 12 weeks unpaid leave for the birth of a child or placement of a child for adoption or foster care. Employees are required to provide appropriate certification to the Human Resources Director when taking the maternity leave, FMLA or MPLA leave. The full FMLA and MPLA provisions can be found on the Town of Milford website. If an employee has been approved for the maternity leave which extends beyond the FMLA, provided 12-week period, the employee is required to use accrued paid time during this leave. Once the time is exhausted, remaining time will be taken unpaid.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend Section 5.07 of the Personnel bylaw maternity to read as follows: 5.07 maternity leave without pay may be granted for up to one year by an employee's appointing authority. It is the Town of Milford's policy to adhere to the Family Medical Leave Act and the Massachusetts Parental Leave Act, allowing employees up to 12 weeks of unpaid leave for the birth of a child or placement of a child for adoption or foster care. Employees are required to provide appropriate certification to the Human Resources Director when taking a maternity FMLA or MPLA leave. The full FMLA and MPLA provisions can be found on the Town of Milford website. If an employee has been approved for maternity leave which extends beyond the FMLA- If an employee has been approved for maternity leave which extends beyond the FMLA-provided twelve-week period, the employee is required to use accrued paid leave during this time. Once the time is exhausted, remaining time off will be unpaid. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard? Scott?
Yes, please. Thank you. This really just brings us in compliance with the rest of the state in the FMLA and MPLA laws that are currently in place at any employer outside the Town of Milford.
Any vote to be heard? Mr. Nero.
Ladies and gentlemen, Dan Nero, once in Precinct Seven, switched unfavorably to Precinct Five without my consent. The last couple of lines appear to be a language issue to me. The employee, let's see, if an employee had been approved, provided a twelve-week period, the employee is required to use accrued paid leave. It doesn't specify what paid leave. Vacation or sick leave, so I wish somebody would tell me whether that's important or not, because vacation time, I think, is perfectly permissible, but if it's also allowing sick leave time because you want to stay home with your child, I don't think that's permissible. And the next sentence, once the time is exhausted, it doesn't define the time. I guess we assume it's the twelve-week period of time, but it doesn't state it specifically. So if someone could clarify that and whether it's the intent of the taxpayers to allow the use of sick leave along with vacation pay to stay home with your child. Thank you.
Any vote to be heard? Scott?
As is the case with other employers as well, they actually have the option of using both sick as well as vacation time. In order to do this, actually, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, sick time is allowable for taking care of yourself or dependents thereof. So if your child is sick, you can use sick time in Massachusetts to stay home and take care of children. And that's the same with any employer that's out there. They have the option of being able to use that. The time that is referenced earlier in the statement speaks for itself.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article Twenty-two. Town Council Board.
Charles Baudy, Town Council. I move that the Town vote to amend Article Nine, Section One of the General Bylaws as follows. Quotation: Section One, Bond Requirements. Every contract entered into by the Town exceeding four thousand dollars shall be accompanied by a suitable bond for the faithful performance of the same or by deposit of money or security to the amount of such bond, provided, however, that if the Board of Selectmen find and vote that such bond is unnecessary, such bond need not be obtained. End of quote. And replacing it with, quote, "Section One, Bond Requirements." Every contract entered into by the Town exceeding forty thousand dollars shall be accompanied by a suitable bond for the faithful performance of the same or by deposit of money or security to the amount of such bond, provided, however, that if the Board of Selectmen find and vote that such bond is unnecessary, such bond need not be obtained." Quotations.
Motion made in second of the Town vote to amend Article Nine, Section One of the General Bylaws as follows: Section One, Bond Requirements. Every contract entered into by the Town exceeding four thousand dollars shall be accompanied by a suitable bond for the faithful performance of the same or by deposit of money or security to the amount of such bond, provided, however, if the Board of Selectmen find and vote that such bond is unnecessary, such bond need not be obtained. And replacing it with, quotation marks, "Section One, Bond Requirements." Every contract entered into by the Town exceeding forty thousand dollars shall be accompanied by a suitable bond for the faithful performance of the same or by deposit of money or security to the amount of such bond, provided, however, that if the Board of Selectmen find and vote that such bond is unnecessary, such bond need not be obtained. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Charles?
Just very simply, this is a requirement in our bylaws for all contracts of the Town, and it has remained unchanged for a generation or so. At the time, four thousand dollars was a considerable sum of money. A generation later, it's not so much. A performance bond is essentially a sort of insurance that the contractor that we hire will perform the job, especially if it's one that has been competitively bid, and if the person doesn't perform the job, we're able to go against the bond and recover the money or have the work performed in place of the vendor who has alighted without completing the work. The requirements for public procurement, for competitive bidding, et cetera, have increased over the years. This is simply to keep our bylaw more in tune with the financial market and the vendors that we seek today as opposed to a generation ago, and I would encourage you to support this change.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-three. Scott?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of Milford Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing loader number two with a new loader for snow plowing, snow removal, loading materials, stockpiling materials, and all day-to-day operations of the Highway Department.
Motion made in second of the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing loader number two with a new loader for snow plowing, snow removal, loading materials, stockpiling materials, and all day-to-day operations of the Highway Department. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, if approved, this machine will be replacing a nineteen ninety-nine Caterpillar front-end loader. The current loader is not roadworthy and in need of costly repairs, including serious rust issues, brakes, and cooling system issues. It would be a cost prohibitive for us to try to make the machine usable for our needs. The new machine will be equipped with a front snow plow and a side wing plow, making the loader a very efficient snow plowing machine while eliminating the need for several plow contractors. Therefore, I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, Edward Bertorelli, Chairman of the Library Board of Trustees. I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Library Trustees for the purpose of purchasing archival storage for the Paul E. Curran Historic Collection Room.
Motion made in second of the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Library Trustees for the purpose of purchasing archival storage for the Paul E. Curran Historical Collection Room. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Bertorelli.
Mr. Moderator, this amount of money would replace the current wooden shelving which we have in part of the room now. We've come to find out that the wooden shelving is detrimental to some of the collections, the books and old manuscripts that are stored on it. This would be, this shelving replaced with standard archival shelving, which is an aluminum shelving, which will not have any harm or help deteriorate or aid in deterioration some of the old volumes. So we ask for your support in this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-five. Parsons.
Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety-two thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee for the purpose of upgrading the HVAC equipment and software at the Stacy Middle School, which will allow efficient management of the school's HVAC system.
Motion made in second that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety-two thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee for the purpose of upgrading the HVAC equipment and software at the Stacy Middle School, which will allow efficient management of the school's HVAC system. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable.
Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members, in an effort to complete ongoing work to the Stacy Middle School HVAC system, this article, if approved, will result in improved and efficient management of the HVAC system at Stacy Middle School. Your approval is requested for this last phase of work in what has been a five-year process that will ultimately ensure proper functioning of our middle school's HVAC system.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-six. Mr. Vilani.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Legislature for special legislation to provide for the grant of an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be consumed on the premises, which legislation shall provide substantially as follows.
Motion made in second to dispense with the reading of the remainder of the motion if it's exactly as appears in the article that was inserted in the warrant. Is it, Mr. Vilani?
Yes, it is.
It is exactly as appears. Any vote to be heard in the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon motion dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion dispense is carried. What is the Finance Committee of recommendation?
Refer to sponsor.
Refer to sponsor. Mr. Vilani.
Mr. Moderator, the proponent is represented by attorney Suzette Ferrera. I believe she is a Milford resident, and she would like to speak on behalf of this article.
Okay. Suzette?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. My name is Suzette Ferrera. I'm an attorney with Consigliere and Bracardo in town. I represent Tacadiat Light Estrella, which opened earlier this year in the Old Carnivores location. This is a small Mexican restaurant that offers both dine-in and take-out service. I'm here tonight with the owners of this new restaurant, which also includes Mr. Eusebio Ruelis, who is actually one of the owners of Acapulco's on East Main Street. He is trying to expand and improve this small restaurant by offering alcoholic beverages while you're dining in. Right now, he is not able to sell any alcohol in this location. It is our position that this venue is a perfect location to have an all-alcohol license in order to improve and increase the business to this area. Mr. Ruelis has had a great reputation and great history over at Acapulco's, and he's hoping to be as successful in this new location. As you may know, the Town of Milford does not have any more liquor licenses available, and the only way to get one is that Town Meeting approve it tonight so that the Board of Select and competition, the Town Legislature, for an additional license, and we ask for your support of this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of achieving Phase One of the Town of Milford's plan for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Motion made in second of the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of achieving Phase One of the Town of Milford's plan for compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
I'm sorry?
Favorable.
Favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Town received a grant to work with a consultant to develop an Americans with Disabilities Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. The plan was approved by the Board of Selectmen in two thousand eighteen. The plan provided a report for all town buildings, schools, parks, and recreation areas. The Town now needs to begin the implementation of this plan. This article seeks the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be used to begin projects at Town Hall, in the schools, and in our town parks. I ask for your support for this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question, yes.
Kate Mastriani, Precinct Three. I was just seeking some clarification. I think it said that we were seeking one hundred and fifty thousand as a portion of future expenses, and what are we looking? Do we have a total that we're shooting for based on the plan that we will be spending over time? And could you respond to that?
Any vote to be heard? Mr. Vilani.
The Town received a detailed and comprehensive plan. This is a small portion of the cost to implement that plan. The plan will be implemented over the next five to probably ten years. Basically, we want to start with basic projects that will affect accessibility. For example, one of the projects we'd like to do here at Town Hall is to increase the accessibility from the parking lot and including the handicap ramp. The parks and the schools are also going to look to implement projects to begin, but this is just beginning to seeking the implementation of that plan. We need to show a good faith effort to begin the implementation, and this would be the start of that. We also try to look for grants that may be available. We have applied for grants, and hopefully we'll be fortunate enough to receive one or more grants for either parks project, school project, or a Town Hall, or a Town project.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-eight. Scott?
Town Meeting, Mr. Moderator, I move that the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for the purpose of procuring any and all items required to evaluate, repair, and maintain the Milford Pond Dam, also known as Cedar Swamp Pond Dam, as referenced in the Phase One Inspection Evaluation Report performed and written by Western and Sampson Engineers Incorporated dated July eleventh, two thousand sixteen.
Motion made in second of the Town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer for the purpose of procuring any and all items required to evaluate, repair, and maintain the Milford Pond Dam, also known as Cedar Swamp Pond Dam, as referenced in the Phase One Inspection slash Evaluation Report performed and written by Western and Sampson Engineers Inc. dated July sixteen, two thousand sixteen. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, if approved, the funding will be used to finalize the Phase Two Inspection Evaluation Report analysis, design work, and finalize the construction phase of the project. Action items to be done are as follows: Conduct topographic and bathometric surveys, detailed inspection of the concrete structure by a structural engineer, perform any updated hydraulic analyses, replace the low-level bypass gate, prepare design plans and specifications for improvement in construction, solicit costs for construction with design plans and specifications. Construction and repairs include replacing bypass gate, repair concrete, remove vegetation, and inspect flashboards, et cetera. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's carried unanimously. Article Twenty-nine. Mr. Tretl.
Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members, I'm Steve Tretl, Precinct Three, and a member of the Town- member of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. I move that the town vote to authorize the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee to take all reasonable and necessary steps for the one-time trial use of electronic voting equipment at the two thousand and twenty annual town meeting.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to authorize the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee to take all reasonable and necessary steps for the one-time trial use of anonymous electronic voting equipment at the two thousand and twenty annual town meeting. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Okay?
Okay. Mr. Moderator and town meeting members, the two thousand and seventeen survey of town meeting members asked the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee to investigate several enhancements and issues, and among those was electronic voting. So we did some research, actually, we did a lot of research, contacting town officials whose town meetings use electronic voting, and survey results by the Mass Moderators Association. To sum it up, electronic voting is not new. It's been around since two thousand and eleven. Thirty-six towns are either using or considering using it. Twenty-five towns now use it and value it, including neighbors, neighboring towns, Bellingham, Oxbridge, and Natick. Consensus was that it works well, its use is uncomplicated, and it is very efficient. Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee concluded electronic voting is worthy of consideration by town meeting members. So how do we do, get all of you to up to speed with what took us a lot of effort to look into? We won't ask you to get bogged down in the mechanics. What we need to, what we need you to know is how it works at a real town meeting, hands-on. So, we devised a three-step plan to do just that. Phase one, you just heard my brief summary of our research. Article twenty-nine before you simply gives authorization to conduct the two thousand and twenty spring town meeting using electronic voting. This is to give you some real, hands-on understanding. There is no further commitment to use electronic voting beyond that town meeting. Phase two, this is where you learn and evaluate electronic voting by doing it. This is where you get that hands-on experience. After that town meeting, the town meeting selection, the town meeting study and improvement committee will send each of you a survey to get your input on your experience with electronic voting use and the features and procedure a town meeting should use. Following that, our committee will use your input to define electronic voting from your input for the town, for the Milford Town Meeting. Phase three, finally, at the October two thousand and twenty special town meeting, an article will be introduced for town meeting members to consider adopting electronic voting with the features and procedures defined by your input. If approved, our committee will procure electronic services and assist implementation at the twenty-one, at the two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting. So that's the plan. All you have to do tonight is approve Article twenty-nine, which is electronic voting to be used for the annual town meeting next spring. No further commitments.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty.
Mr. Harrison.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend section five point eight A, five point eight B, and five point eight C of the Milford Personnel Bylaws as follows. By deleting the current sections five point eight A, five point eight B, five point eight C, and inserting in their places instead the following new sections of five point A, five point eight B, five point eight C. This is under vacation leave.
Motion's been made and seconded. We waive the reading of the remainder of the articles if it is exactly as appears in the warrant that each of the town meeting members has been provided with. Is it exactly the same, Scott?
Yes.
It is. Okay. Any other vote to care to be heard on the motion to dispense? If not, the question comes upon the motion to dispense. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Is Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
What this, what this article is really seeking to do is to bring our vacation policy in line, again, to make us continue to be an attractive place to attract the right types of employees. Currently, as it stands right now, a newly hired town employee can wait upwards of a year before they're allowed to take one day off from their original hire date. What this allows it to do is it gives greater flexibility, brings us in line with current hiring practices out there in the marketplace, makes us a more attractive place to attract people to come work, and also gives some leeway to the appointing authority and hiring managers within each of departments.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-two. Thirty-one, I'm sorry. Thirty-one. Sloughman Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move the town vote to amend Article thirty-two, section three A, five A of the general bylaws as follows. By deleting the current section three A, five A, which reads, "Good physical condition including ability to pass physical examination and agility test," and inserting in its place instead the following new section three A, five A, "Good physical condition including of the ability to pass physical examination."
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to amend Article thirty-two, section three A, five A of the general bylaws as follows. By deleting the current section three A, five A, which reads, "Good physical condition including ability to pass physical examination and agility test," and inserting in place instead the following new section three A, five A, "Good physical condition including ability to pass physical examination." Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Sloughman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The current bylaw requires that any new police chief would have to pass an agility test. The Police Chief Selection Review Committee, upon the advice of the Consultant Resource Management Associates, voted unanimously to eliminate the ability, I'm sorry, the agility test requirement. A physical agility test is in no way related to the job of police chief. This test typically is used only for testing of candidates for entry-level positions of police officer, for which this is job-related, unlike the police chief or other command staff, police personnel. There is a concern that serious top candidates will look at this requirement and very likely view Milford's requiring of this as highly unprofessional, and thus decide not to apply for the position of the police chief in Milford. So with this, the selection committee asks the Board of Selectmen to approach this body to remove this on the advice of their consultation, of their consultants, and also after deliberation among their committee. So I'd urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard?
Brian Cole, Precinct Eight. As much as I find it strange to change the rules in the middle of the procedure, I do agree with getting rid of superfluous requirements, but I just want to also echo the words of former Selectman D. Bartolomeus, and hope that the Police Chief Selection Committee or someone will seriously rewrite the entire Police Chief Selection Bylaw, top to bottom, because it's proven, I think this time has proven it's inadequate for the task at hand. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-two. Mr. Valani.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the purpose of purchasing telephone system hardware and software, overtime/off-duty accounting software, and police/fire/emergency medical dispatch and communications computer software upgrades.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the police chief for the purpose of purchasing telephone system hardware and software, overtime, off-duty accounting software, and police-fire-emergency, medical dispatch, and communications computer software upgrades. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to care to be heard, Mr. Valani?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the police chief to explain the article first.
Okay. McGeady?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this project was initiated prior to my arrival and never reached completion. As you're aware, the department functions primarily through telephonic communication via nine-one-one emergency lines, as well as emergency lines and business lines. The supporting software and hardware of this system that we currently have is obsolete and is no longer supported. The company that we purchased this from went out of business in two thousand and nine. Since two thousand and thirteen, the system has not been supported. We haven't had a service agreement with them since two thousand and thirteen. The hardware system is discontinued and no longer supported by the current vendor who maintains it for us, and all repairs and replacements are done on an as-needed basis at a cost of a hundred and forty dollars per hour for their time, plus parts and materials. Software is obsolete, no longer supported. Emergency calls for service, police-fire, and emergency medical dispatch are at times unintelligible due to static noise and interruptions and disruptions. In fact, one dispatch station, if all the wires are connected the way they're supposed to be connected, you can't hear what the caller says. You have to disconnect the line, which renders the system functioning, but we don't have a recall system available to us immediately, which we now have at all our dispatch stations. If something is unintelligible at first, or you want to go back and review something, you press a button, it's there, and instantly, this renders that capability not possible. In addition, our command center, which is located right behind the dispatch center, is, which we use for critical incidents, emergency situations, and extreme weather conditions by all public safety and emergency management personnel currently is inoperable. Primarily, the reason for that is that all of the phone systems and parts have been taken from that command center, one piece at a time, and repurposed primarily in the dispatch area, where we have to keep things functioning twenty-four-seven. So with those things being repurposed, if we had to use that critical resource at this time, it would not be possible. We also use that as a backup station. If something were to go wrong in the dispatch center, we have that as an immediate backup. They simply go through one from one door to the other, and they're back up and running. Unfortunately, those parts are no longer available to keep the system functioning. So in short, when it comes to emergency police dispatch, emergency fire dispatch, and emergency medical dispatch, which is all done from this command, from this dispatch center for the entire town of Milford, those seconds that are lost are critical. I urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-three. Mr. Moderator. Buckley.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate transfer of available funds of sum of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars to line item two-one-zero dash five-one-one-zero of the Police Department Personnel Services budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty.
Motion made and seconded, the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars to line item two-ten dash five-one-one-zero of the Police Department Personal Services budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Sloughman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of approximately one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars to be transferred to the Police Department Personal Services budget to replace that same amount that was removed in the May two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting, with seventy-nine in favor of removing the money and seventy-eight against. As you may call, this effort was led by some who believed the Board of Selectmen operated beyond their authority. This matter was litigated, and the Board of Selectmen prevailed in Superior Court as issued by the judge. That being said, the vote had no impact on the selection of the interim police chief, but instead had an unintended consequence of underfunding the entire Police Department public safety budget. With the police chief in place since July, the Board of Selectmen now requests these funds to be appropriated to bring to the public safety budget, returning it to its full capacity. If not, the reductions in funds would be felt elsewhere in public safety. These decisions and their impact would likely fall upon the new chief once he or she is hired as their first order of business. I would urge you to approve this article. Thank you very much, town meeting members.
Any other vote to care to be heard? Mr. Bon Temple.
Just some, Mike Bon Temple, Precinct Four, just some clarification. I rose in opposition to amend the budget, not because I disputed the Board of Selectmen's authority to appoint an interim chief. If you recall, my reason for pulling the money was simply that you had a deputy chief, and appointing an interim chief, when you had a deputy chief who could do the job, was a waste of taxpayer money. That was the argument. Had nothing to do with the appointing authority of the Board of Selectmen. Secondly, I wish the previous speaker spoke about balancing the budget for the, for the Police Department Personal Services account. The one seventy-one, two ninety-seven that was pulled back in May represented the police chief's salary, the former police chief Tom Alafon's salary, if he were still to be chief of police for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Okay? And it turns out, to actually balance the Police Department's budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, the amount that should be put into the personal services account for the Police Department is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. For that's the amount that the Board of Selectmen on June nineteenth entered into an employment agreement with the interim police chief. Unfortunately, I could not make a motion to amend that amount tonight, and the, we are, based upon the employment agreement, the Board of Selectmen have contracted, have obligated the town to pay that salary, so I would support this motion to put the money back into the account. Thank you.
Any other vote to care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford U. be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Youth Commission for the purpose of procuring, engineering, and design work and proper installation of the HVAC system in the basement of the Milford Youth Center, which will provide proper air exchange and dehumidification.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford Youth Commission for the purpose of procuring, engineering, and design work and proper installation of the HVAC system in the basement of the Milford Youth Center, which will provide proper air exchange and dehumidification. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Any vote to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, if you could recognize the youth center director, Jen Ward.
Mr. Walsh is requesting that Jennifer Ward be able to address the meeting. Are you a registered voter in the town of Milford, Jennifer?
No.
No, she's not a registered voter, therefore she would require the unanimous consent of the body. Is there any objection to hearing from the director of the Milford Youth Commission? If not, Jennifer?
Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Jen Ward, and I am the director of the Milford Youth Center. I am here tonight to communicate the need and ask for the support to appropriate the funds for the installation of the correct HVAC systems for the basement rooms in the Milford Youth Center. Last year, town meeting graciously appropriated the funds to install AC into the headhouse of the building, which represents the main floor and second floor mezzanine level. In addition, this town meeting allocated funds for the engineering design work for basement rooms, including our weight room, dance room, and future music multipurpose media center. Due to this allocation, the engineering plans have been completed, and we are ready to start the next phase in completion of this section of the facility. The rooms included in the scope of this work are areas that were not part of the past renovation, but youth center staff have been able to get them started through community donations, fundraisers, and grants. This amounts to well over one hundred thousand dollars' worth of labor, funds, equipment, and materials that were gained internally and not asked to be appropriated by this town body. The remaining need for these spaces that is being asked for tonight is for the funds for the installation of the correct HVAC systems and controls that have been designed and prepared. Per recommendation of the engineers, the plans call for the installation of one multi-zone split system and two energy recovery ventilation, or ERV, units. ERV systems offer high reliability, are incredibly flexible, and optimize energy efficiency and savings. ERVs also provide the cleaner and healthier indoor air necessary to enhance indoor air quality. The ERV system is designed for these basement spaces because the effects of pollutants are heightened in fitness centers, because occupants are breathing heavily during workouts and inhaling more air through their mouths. This air forgoes the filters in the nose and travels deeper into the lungs. Also, there is a higher risk of mold growth in these areas. Exhausting contaminated air and continually replacing it with fresh outdoor air is an effective method of maintaining a healthy indoor environment. Finally, we have had two independent studies done that have recommended the installation of these HVAC systems to help maintain the integrity of the building due to humidity and high occupancy and the need for mechanical systems for conditioned fresh air. I would like to thank you for your time and the opportunity to be recognized tonight and ask town meeting for your support of Article thirty-four.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-five. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Luke.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Vernon Grove Board of Trustees for the purpose of repaving all the ways within Vernon Grove Cemetery.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Vernon Grove Cemetery Board of Trustees for the purpose of repaving all the ways within Vernon Grove Cemetery. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Luke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jamie Lukeini. I am the chairman of the Vernon Grove Board of Trustees, as well as a town meeting member Precinct One. The article before you is asking for your support so we can pave all of the roads within the Vernon Grove Cemetery. These roads are currently in great disrepair and are in need of repaving. We, as a committee, have explored several options and feel that using a two-inch overlay of asphalt is the best course of action at this time to repair all of the roads and make them safe for all that walk and drive over all the roads inside Vernon Grove Cemetery. We urge you to vote favorably on this article. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Scott.
Article thirty-six.
Propose Article thirty-six. I move the town vote to amend the Town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as approved as Article Two on May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting as follows: By removing the word junior from the title Building Custodian under Level One in the hourly rate positions.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the Town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as approved as Article Two of the May twenty nineteen annual town meeting as follows: By removing the word quotation marks junior and the quotation marks from the title of Building Custodian under Level One in hourly rate positions. Finance Committee of recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is really just an adjustment in title. It's actually all the custodians were labeled as junior. Some of them have been in place for multiple decades. It's just a clerical change.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-seven. Town Council.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Tree Warden for the removal of dead, dying, and otherwise compromised trees for public safety and to reduce the power outages and road closures.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Tree Warden for the removal of dead, dying, or otherwise compromised trees for public safety and to reduce power outages and road closures. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Charles?
Mr. Moderator, I would ask that Chuck Renaud, the Tree Warden, be recognized to present on this. He's a registered voter and resident of the town.
Mr. Renaud.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Last year, we asked for a hundred thousand dollars to remove the dead and dying trees. That program was an extremely successful one. We have not had one tree failure from a town tree that I know of that has caused any trouble. I'm again asking for money this year in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to continue this program on. I urge you to vote for that. Thank you very much.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-eight. Zack.
Zachary Taylor, Finance Director, At-Large Member. Article thirty-eight. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Information Technology Department for the rewiring of the Town Hall Information Technology Systems.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Information Technology Department for the rewiring of the Town Hall Information Technology Systems. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Zack?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This important technology upgrade request has been on the five-year plan for all five years. In fact, it's been pushed back a couple of times so that we could be better prepared. We are now ready. We have upgraded switches and other networking equipment. We have fiber entering the building, and now this vital upgrade will replace the outdated wiring with the most up-to-date available. This project will not only have direct benefits for today's experience, but will future-proof the network to support whatever technology or applications the town decides to install for decades to come. I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-nine. Selectman Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of installing a new floor at the Milford Senior Center.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of installing a new floor at the Senior Center. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Selectman Walsh.
Town meeting members, this article seeks the sum of fifty thousand to install a new hardwood floor in the function room at the Senior Center. The original cork floor was installed when the center was built in two thousand and four. The floor has been damaged over time, is in poor condition, and needs replacement. I urge your support on this article.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article what? Moderator. Scott.
Ladies and gentlemen, my sixth and final article from the Personnel Board. I move the town vote to amend the Town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as approved as Article Two of the May twentieth, two thousand and nineteen annual town meeting as follows: By removing the position of local building inspector, P.T., from the hourly rated positions.
Motion made in second of the town vote to amend the Town of Milford Wage and Salary Classification Plan as approved as Article Two of the May twenty nineteen annual town meeting as follows: By removing the position of local building inspector, P.T., from the hourly rate position. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Scott?
Thank you. This is really a cleanup. This is a position that existed in two locations, both as a full-time salary position, as well as a part-time hourly position. It was a redundancy, and there's no need, based on information we've received from the department head and working in coordination with our HR director, Maureen Giffen.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article forty-one. Gotta get quicker with that, Mr. Moore. Very slow. Beginning of the meeting, a lot quicker.
Everyone laughs at my scooter. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, nine hundred thousand. Two million of said sum to be added to the Town Stabilization Account, number eighty-three-hundred, and nine hundred thousand of said sum to be added to the Town Stabilization Account, number eighty-three-fifty.
Motion made in second of the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, nine hundred thousand dollars. Two million dollars of said sum to be added to the Town's Stabilization Account, number eight-three-zero-zero, and nine hundred thousand of said sum to be added to the Town's Stabilization Account, number eight-three-five-zero. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As I mentioned earlier in my presentation, folks, we're trying to put more money into our stabilization account for future projects. This article achieves that. I urge your support. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article forty-two. Selectman Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of two million, eight hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expense to fix the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Motion made in second of the town vote to transfer the sum of two million, eight hundred thousand dollars from the excess and deficiency account to be utilized to offset operating capital and debt expenses to fix the tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty. Finance Committee recommendation?
Favorable.
Favorable. Mr. Buckley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This article seeks to appropriate the sum of two-point-eight million dollars from free cash to offset the tax rate. This continues Milford's longstanding commitment to offset the tax burden by applying free cash against a total amount to be raised through the levy. Our overall financial strategy for the year was to maintain an excess levy capacity figure of at least three million dollars. Applying two-point-eight million dollars of free cash will not only accomplish this desired outcome, but will in fact far exceed our targeted goal for fiscal year twenty for an anticipated total of three-point-eight million dollars in excess levy capacity that the town otherwise could have taxed, given the state laws with Proposition Two and a Half. I'd urge your support and provide this tax relief for the community. Thank you.
Any other vote to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. It's a pleasure of the meeting. Motion made in second to dissolve the warrant. All those in favor manifest by saying aye. Opposed, no. Monitors, please bring forward their attendance sheets, please. Monitors.